Are we good? Okay. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. I'm sorry, be back in a second here. This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Representatives shall approach the podium, state their name and address with a clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Please speak.
Here.
Back, here, Camper.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Hans.
Here.
Item number one, consideration of approval of draft minutes of May 19, 2015.
No approval.
All right. Give a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
On your fairer motion, Hans Schmidt, Singleton, Pike, Fritz, Camper, Beck, Mr. Motion Period.
Okay. Item number two, consideration of consent agenda.
No approval.
All right. Give a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
On your fairer motion, you see that Camper, Fritz, Pike, Schmidt, Hans, Mr. Period.
All right. Item number three, this is a presentation by Ayers and Ayers Incorporated on possible rail site project. We have a couple representatives here this evening who would like to present. That Cory and Mike.
There we go.
Go ahead.
Good.
Tell yours.
Thank you. Charles, thank you for wearing a tie. I felt a little place for Josh to walk in and help me feel a bit more comfortable. Good, welcome. Excited to be here tonight. And about the opportunity, I'd like to, I'm Mike Ayers with Ayers and Ayers and this is Cory Barber. And we have a short presentation for you tonight. Welcome for questions at any time, so please feel free. I'd like to start by telling everybody a short little story, because I think it's kind of a fun little story. Cory and I have been working with an industrial development customer for about four years. So we're in the weeds. We're putting a project together. We are within days of a real estate closing of 60 acres of ground and getting ready to start on a real commercial project. At the 11:00 hour and 59 minutes, there was a little bug. And when I say bug, a little glitch in the plan. And I was speaking with my business friend and development partner in this and Will said to me, "Mike, don't get embarrassed, we don't have a good Plan B. We need a good Plan B." It took Cory and I and Gary Tucker in our office 10 minutes to call Jonathan with your economic development group because of the rail siding opportunity that is present in Seward, Nebraska. So everyone in the group and in the room needs to pat themselves on the back because having this rail site as a potential opportunity might be a big win for a customer that we have and also for the state of Nebraska and Seward as well. So let me tell you a little bit about what we're doing and how we're putting this together and what timeframe that we have. We're here to talk to you about a commercial plant, industrial plant, and I'm going to describe the plant process to you really quick. I think that's important. Our goal is to make pipe that will be used in the oil fields as part of the drilling process. And so the pipe will be in diameters of roughly 2 and 5/8ths up to potentially 14 inches in diameter. And what our customer is going to do is bring pellets of steel in to a location here. And we're going to take that steel, we're going to heat it up in a big old furnace, a big furnace, until it's red hot. We're going to take a piercing rod, or just a poker, and we're going to insert it in the end of the pipe and that is going to give the pipe a diameter and a length. We're going to take that hot piece of pipe, move it down a line, straighten it, shape it, and make sure that it's true to its size. We're going to cool that pipe. Then on one end, we're going to put a thread and on the opposite end, we're going to put a coupling. Now, this sounds pretty straightforward until you start to think of the volume and the mass and the weight of the product that we're handling. So we're going to do that and that's a product that will be sold. We will then also take that product as it is, a piece of pipe with a thread and a coupling on it, and then we will heat treat that. So we're going to heat it up, cool it, heat it up, cool it, and then move that out as a finished product. So basically, we're building a plant to process pipe. The pipe will be used in North Dakota, in Wyoming, Pennsylvania, and in Texas. So we're really fortunate to have a real central sink as part of that development process. Now, I, like everyone, Cory and I have been working on this for four years. And I don't know about you, but the oil prices have been going down. We've been paying less at the gas pump. And Charlie, the gentleman that's responsible for this project, said, we said, "Charlie, what's going on?" He said, "Oh," he goes, "I've been in this whole business my whole life. The price is going to fluctuate and it's going to take us two years to get this ready. By the time we're ready, the oil price will rebound." And I believe in Charlie, so I believe in that comment. I think there's a lot of validity to that. So, the rail site, the opportunity, and the plan that I've discussed. Cory, why don't you, oh, I got the slide on. Okay. Still the wrong one. There you go. There you go. Our project team is Ayers and Ayers and we're a design builder and industrial contractor in Lincoln. And we're working with the development team, Will Risinger, a friend of ours, an economic development person in a smaller community in Iowa. And Will and I are friends and we've developed this project over time along with Charlie Havens. Charlie is a, an oil man. I can't describe him any other way. Josh, don't you think he describes an oil man?
Texas oil.
He's Texas oil man. Okay? And he really is. He's produced domestic development oil and gas production his entire life. He has roots back to the Nebraska area. I think that's important. One of his first jobs, he talks about was working in downtown Omaha right out of college and that was a few years ago. So, you know, everybody in some way or the other wants to come back home. Okay? We have a project synopsis for everyone. This is a $100 million investment for Charlie and Will. It's a big deal and there's a lot of money here. In total, as a total employment, it's 150 people. It's a 24/7 plant, 365 days a year. It will generally operate probably off a couple of days, but it's a 24/7 operation. It'll have an annual payroll in excess of $6 million. A building investment probably north of $45 million. An equipment investment, a direct equipment investment of $30 million. They're in the process now as we speak of purchasing and implementing all of the equipment that we'll use in the facility. We'll have a railcar usage, this is a rail plant. It's designed to have almost all of the incoming and outgoing product on railcars. So anything that gets shipped in excess of 500 miles is intended to put in a railcar going in and or out. Our building size, it's a, it's a big building. It's, on current plans, we're 868,000 square feet. It's 20 acres under one roof. It can generally be described as a 45 to 48-foot eve height on a building and it will be highlighted by our current plans with about 28 bridge cranes to move material through the plant. So it's a big, big building and a lot going on. We looked at Seward, we called Jonathan, we were pretty excited because we knew the opportunities that our president in Seward and loved the community and we called Jonathan and we came out and said, "Okay, here we are located with close proximity to I-80 with a strong workforce in the community and in the Lincoln area as well to support the jobs, also the access to the rail and the plan that the community has." We then broke that down to a little closer view, a scope of size, relative size of a building in respect to Tenneco so you can kind of get a size scale of the two facilities. You know, that's just a really, really large building. But our first goal was for Jonathan and Cory and I to get Charlie and Will up here. About, we presented Seward as a community to them and within about a week, I think, Josh, it was about a week they were up here. And we had a day to look at the ground, talk with local officials and say, "Hey, is this a maybe?" Will and Charlie, this was a week ago, looked at us, gave us a thumbs up and said, "You boys get working on this. We need to see if we can make this happen." So that's why we're here. We basically looked at the rail site. Cory, why don't you point to this, we'll just talk about. We took and laid the plan out that you have, that you developed in your initial phase, which is to come off of the main line and then have a loop around the site. That's important because Burlington Northern wants to be able to take an entire train off of the track. And so we've taken and drawn this out as far as this phase of the job with one of the two loops going around the perimeter of the building. Cory, why don't you point to that?
Got this main line coming in here. You have to come off the main track, your neighbor's back on.
Right.
Then there's a loop here that we put completely around the track so you can get cars in for both unloading and loading.
Let's back up a little bit. First thing I want to point out is the large loop around the site. Cory, why don't you point to that?
This one right here.
Okay. And in our initial plan, because that's part of Seward's long-term plan, was to start with the end in mind because we realized that we're part of a significant development. A big part, but we're part of the development. So our plan today, in our first discussions with the railroad and with Will and Charlie on usage, was to put that entire loop in. And the railroad would like to do that again because we'd be able to take an entire train off of the main line into the area. Okay? Then above and beyond that, we need to access the building. Cory, why don't you highlight where the building is? Just the yellow.
Here's the building here in the yellow outline. You can kind of see, kind of set the rail up for loading and unloading purposes out of the building here in these.
Most of our materials will come in on rail and will leave on rail. But there'll be a lot of pipe cutting and miscellaneous materials that will come in. So basically, we have at the present just four general areas where we'll reach out past the plant, stage with the railcars coming in and out. And again, what I want to point to everybody is, this is our start. This is two weeks in. You know, this is our first good guess. You know, but we wanted to have something so that the community could have a vision, at least for today, so that Charlie and Will could have a vision and so we can set up a plan that we think makes economic sense not only for our development team but for the community as well. Keep in mind, that building is 1,850 feet in length. That is six blocks long. Okay? It's a big building. It's two blocks wide and six blocks long. I like to describe buildings in that size. That's a pretty good size. Okay? This is just kind of what makes you, if you look close, Josh, you can see that a lot of the writing is in Chinese. A lot of the equipment that will facilitate this plant comes from China. We've had two folks from our office participate with Will, Ayers, excuse me, with Charlie on an extensive trip, an equipment buying process in China. But basically, we start in the upper right-hand corner of the building and we'll store all of our piercing equipment. Then that big, then that red circle is a furnace. That's about an 80-foot diameter furnace. We'll take the pellets of steel and heat those up to poker hot. And then, right, and adjacent to that, we'll have our pipe piercing operation where we will take the billet of steel and puncture that pipe with that piercing rod. We'll then move that down the line. We'll cut the pipe to specific length. We'll ship out some of the pipe in that form. That's called a green pipe. Or then we'll move it to the bottom of the drawing and thread it and couple the pipe there. We'll then move that over, reheat it, cool it, a tempering process, and then take that pipe and ship it out. Again, a lot going on on a very tall building, lots of big cranes to move a lot of big, heavy pipe throughout that process. I wanted to show everybody a few pictures of the facilities that we visited when we were in China so that you have some scale. I think all of you have some pictures, but we have some larger pictures here that we'll talk about. And basically, this is a setup, a staging. These are piercing rods. Piercing rods, you need different piercing rods of a lot of different diameter sizes to puncture the steel. And again, it's extremely hot. I mean, the steel comes out, it's red burner hot. And so the piercing rods, the equipment, they need lots of maintenance and constant upkeep. Again, more pictures of the same, just big open space. What Cory and I are trying to show here is just a lot of big, heavy stuff, big, heavy equipment going through the facility. I think this is kind of a fun picture. See that big red piece of pipe, Josh? That baby's hot. And that's what they poke with steel and that's after it's been pierced and it's in a straightening line because everything, once it gets touched, that steel is soft. It can penetrate it, move down a line, and they continue to round it, shape it, and keep it straight. Lot of heat generated. Again, more of the same, just a lot of where their pipe, this is a cooling ramp because once that pipe is hot, it needs to be cooled before it gets threaded and just a lot of all referred to as big process. And big buildings and big open space as well. Okay. So Cory and Mike and Will and Charlie started with a to-do list. Other than rail, which is important on our site and ground to build a building, we have a huge need for natural gas. We sat down, spoke with Mary Simmons from Black Hills and Mary had a couple of really good ideas and she's facilitating how to take and bring site. What's that?
Cheryl Brander.
Cheryl. Oh, Cheryl, excuse me. Got that wrong. Sorry about that. Too many people to talk to. Okay? But talked to the gas company about bringing gas into the site, but it's a huge need. But I believe that the facilities exist about a mile and a half, two miles away from the plant or from a short distance from the plant to facilitate the gas needs that they have. And then electric, we've spoken with local utility group. We have about a 6,000 or 7,000 kilowatt load, which is a heavy-duty power load, to facilitate the building. But we're set up close to where the transmission facilities for the city are with the ability to meet that need. We have not a lot of great sewer needs, but we will have a lot of processed water that we'll handle. We'll be able to take water from the fields that are south of the community directly for our water chilling needs to take care of our processed water and then also water for potable water for other building uses as well from the water system coming in. We have to acquire quite a bit of ground. If you have a 20-acre building, you have quite a bit of other grounds that you might need, maybe two to three times that total amount of space. And then we have probably the toughest nut, but one that lays out well for the site is the rail development. Not only for the future of the development park, but for our specific project needs and we're trying to put that down on paper. And then we're going to also need some road access, I think it's a 294?
294.
To the west and the opportunity to potentially tap in and work around off of 294 as well. Okay, put together a timeline. I couldn't think of any better way to say it than Charlie tasked Cory and I, May 2017, we want to be in production. And that sounds like two years and that might sound like a long time away, but it's not. There's an awful lot to do, but we've gotten, we've got three or four years of planning time worked into this, but we're to the point where they want to start doing work. We'd like to be able to have a site that would be facilitated to start on structures yet even this fall to potentially do our rail work next summer and then do your equipment and things the following 18 months from now and finish out the job taking care of the equipment. What Charlie and Will's plan would be, to bring the equipment operators with them and then for those equipment operators to start the plan up and then slowly leave as they train local people to handle the equipment. Okay? So in general, that's our timeframe and that's what we have in front of us. And I want it to be brief, but I wanted to get this out in front of everyone. Mayor?
Well, I appreciate you taking the time to present this because I know that we have a lot of people who are interested in what happens with that site and it's easier just to have it all in one meeting rather than rely on the coffee shop to disseminate. But sometimes they get it right and sometimes they don't. This is not a public hearing, but because there is interest from the public in particular, after the council has opportunity to ask some questions, we'll open it up to the public in case any one of the audience has questions. But we'll start with the council first. Does anyone have any questions or comments from the council?
Mike, you were commenting at the start and said you need to come up with a Plan B. So is Seward Plan B or Plan A?
Well, you were Plan A today, but you were Plan B the first time I talked to them. Okay? I mean, we were literally a day or two away from closing on a site. But the owners from their specific needs, their needs have grown. They originally weren't only planning to buy pierced pipe and because of purchasing pierced pipe, they were going to heat temper it and thread it here. And so they would like to do the piercing as well. That needs a larger facility and significantly more rail access. And so that's how we've developed. I wouldn't be in front of everyone today if I thought that you were the good next bet. Cory and I have been tasked with the opportunity and I believe the mayor has too with this, let's figure out how to get this done and get this done in Seward.
Yes.
So the glitch basically was is that Charlie's company was originally only wanting to do a certain part of the process, but then he bought another company and wanted to combine both operations? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no. Basically, they looked just to expand the tempering operation into a piercing and tempering operation. So originally, you know, I'm going to tell you, I was really excited because we're going to build a 565,000-square-foot building. But that's grown in size and scale because they're already handling all of the piping and it's a pretty natural next step to add the piercing as part of that process. And they felt that need. We talked earlier about demand and Charlie and, let me tell you what, I believe Charlie to a set, I think that Josh has heard this as well. Roughly during the oil boom time, just a couple of years ago, the US was only able to meet the needs of about 30% of the business. And so a lot of the pipe was imported in. And even though business is down substantially, the US doesn't even begin to cover the baseload of that need. And so this plan would help facilitate that. And so Charlie has found that niche and looking to fulfill that market segment.
So I'm assuming a lot of this pipe would go to the fracking fields basically, based upon where you said they were located. I mean, I've read articles about people's expectations of, I mean, there's a bunch of oil down there for sure. So the long-term reality of the existence of this facility would be more than 10 years, I'm assuming.
Oh, I think it's a, I need to be honest and tell you, I think it's a lifetime deal. Now, lifetime is relative to who you are, but I think it's a, my opinion today as we speak is it's a 30, 40-year, I mean, it's a long-term investment.
And then you mentioned that in your map, you showed the bigger loop, you know, that will encompass the future of the site. At this point, who buys the land for that entire loop? I mean, how do we encompass the whole 300 acres when this company maybe only needs, I don't know how many acres you have. I mean, you have so many acres under one roof, but who's going to buy that?
Don't know right now.
Okay.
And part of what, just let me finish. So with, part of putting this together is how to come up with a plan that, and this is not leverage today. But we want to come up with a plan that they feel that they've gotten a good economic return for the investment that they're making and they have lots of choices about where to put stuff. We brought them here because of the relationship we've developed over time. And, you know, my personal belief is that when I first talked to them, whether it's right or wrong, I said, "I started with rail-ready site." Maybe it should have said rail-ready vision, you know? But to be honest with you, there's a mainline Burlington and so we're trying to facilitate through our discussions with Burlington that they wanted to be able to take a full train off. And that's the reason for the length of the track. Isn't that, Josh?
Yes. That was part of the interest that ENSF had with this location.
And so, to be honest with you, what we're trying to do was to facilitate that need with our layout. And I don't know that there, anything in that respect has been figured out. Our customer has a need. They're going to handle a lot of railcars. Most of their product will come in and out off of railcars. We need to be able to handle it through the specific locations. And so we wanted more than just deciding to unload and load pipe off. And, you know, we were originally, for the plant, for the area that we were looking at, we're more geared towards just having an unloading and loading siding. But to be honest with you, if we can get the material like we're showing here into the plant and out of the plant, that works really well for them. So, you know, do I think a significant cost of that will they bear? Somehow, some way, okay? And I'm not sure how that goes and how TIF might play a fat pack of it. We're just trying to analyze. We needed to come up with a game plan so that we can price it out, talk with Burlington. And we've talked with Burlington, but, you know, getting a maybe and a soft yes and a yes are a little different. So we started, but Seward's come a long way in their discussions with Burlington. I thought, you know, Josh, that the community had done an awful lot to get to a point where we had a great conversation the other day with Burlington.
And just a couple of other things. I don't expect you to have the answers to these right now, but I'm assuming that the information will be forthcoming. Regarding the infrastructure, utility infrastructure, you've got natural gas, electric, water. I would assume that we will see realistic estimates of what that requirement's going to be. And then the city will be able to decide how much of that's going to be burdened upon us because we'll have to weigh that versus our return on that investment, obviously. And then, you know, you've got a building that's 20 acres itself and I know steel, you know, Tenneco doesn't roll any of their own steel. So they're just taking cold steel and forming it, which produces way less emissions of different kinds, odors, steam, off-gassing, whatever, than actually hot-rolling and piercing pipe. So I'd be really interested to know what is the, what is the environmental?
Impact.
Impact, exactly, of a building and an operation of that size because I know, I mean, I've heard I had people two years ago when this first became something that we might do in my ward, you know, write me letters and call me and say, "We don't want Seward to turn into a Columbus if we're like." Not that there's any wrong Columbus.
I like Columbus, but I understand that.
Yeah. But, you know.
All those are great questions.
Yeah. And so I'm just assuming we'll be getting numbers like that going forward?
For example, let's say the gas company and we had a great discussion because we said, "Well, there's a distance the pipe has to come in. Do we bury that in the rate that we charge you for the gas or does there an upfront cost for that and a lower gas usage cost?" And so we would always look at everyone and say, "Both." Okay? Because what we really want to make are, as you said, fact-based decisions. So try to bring the numbers together. And really what we're trying to do today is put it on everybody's radar, give everybody a chance to be informed and think about it so that we can go and address each of those questions case by case. Nebraska has lots of benefits and I think during the group, we talked about some of those benefits the other day. And, you know, one of the greatest benefits we have is low-cost electricity. Okay? And so there's a lot of opportunity there. Another one is we have a great resource in the water that we have. They, and they, they're going to have quite a lot of evaporation because of their cooling operation. Okay? So, you know, they'll use a lot of water as well. Not to be pumped back in through a sewer or anything, but just it will be steam committed. Okay? So we'll have to get you all that information. Okay? And we fully expect to get that and we're just trying to put it on the map today.
It's the one benefit of using the raw water versus processed water that has no real impact on our facility that processes the water because this would likely come directly from the well fields. And so you don't have to worry about overburdening our system with that. And plus, they're not discharging it either, so. John, do you have something?
My question is the resource we get on the water. Is there the availability that you don't need new water? Is there availability that you guys could use our wastewater from our treatment plant? You know, we've dumped so much treated water, our clean water, out of our osmosis system a day.
Mike, my take on that would be, I'd say there's a 100% chance that they'll evaluate that and look hard to facilitate that. They would love that opportunity. And so those are the kind of ideas that we want from a group like this that can put the best ideas in front of people so that they get to make the best back-bay decision too. And I've worked on treatment facilities in the past and that's a great resource for that water.
Yeah. I'd be, I mean, I'd have a lot more people smiling if you used water versus good water out of the well field.
Mm-hmm. I think that's great. That's the kind of stuff we want to talk about. And we have to put the engineering behind it, which I think makes sense.
Chris?
Mike, at 1,500 railcars a year, essentially five cars a day, is that in and out a day? Or I'm just thinking of the rail traffic down here. We don't have any crossing arms or anything. It's just a railroad track and, you know.
I think.
How many that comes into play? Where does it come from? Or is it all going to go under the biaduct and it's not an issue? You know, where are the crossings at? Is it just to the west?
Well, there will be a crossing on the country road on the west that's a 297 right there.
294.
294. And so are we going to put up lights or anything out there? Because I don't know what the plan is there, but let's put corn on every corner and now what do you got when a train's coming?
Right. I know that that area already has the Bots factory over that area as well.
You get to go on the gravel road, Josh. Because you got the straight, it's close east and west, you're going to have to have something to cross as I gravel road.
Well, I'm not sure.
You talked about coming in from, we put a bigger.
Because your trains go east and west.
Right. What I'm getting down to, are we going to have a significant increase in rail traffic? Or is it as simple for, is the railroad, already have trains coming through and they're able to hook on the five cars you need each day in or out?
That's my belief as we speak. However, the rail, our initial discussions with the rail provider was that they didn't know if they were going to come from the west or if they were going to take them all the way to Lincoln and come back out. And so that really. And so that really is a function for how they're gonna stage. And we've tried to set this up to have enough rail storage on-site, so we would have two times two or four days' worth of coverage with extra cars on the site to be able to move around and handle cars within our site. So my take would be, yes, there's gonna be increased traffic, I think it dwarfs to the traffic that you get today, but that's just my opinion because of the, of the old cars that come down the rail. But that's really a better question for Burlington, but one we have to facilitate, because I know we have some higher rail count numbers earlier too on outputs, and so I think that number's a little conservative, it might be more than that, but we need to get that information to you as we develop that as well. And then we'll have to go to Burlington and, to take a look potentially at the road and the crossing, because the safety of everyone is of paramount importance to the operator as well.
And on the site note, we, we are still looking at the possibility of doing a rail transportation district, which would, if we did that with the other communities in the county, would potentially provide funding that could address some of these issues, not just at this location.
Yeah, well, I'm just gonna, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned from the standpoint, you get out to the west side and obviously that's an ag area, and it's, it's one thing to be in a car and know a train's coming, it's a different thing to be in a very loud tractor combine driving along and a train coming as they move equipment around during harvest time.
Think that all of those things need to be evaluated and put together.
The other thing I'd be concerned about is the local traffic in and out of sewer and around the, the rail side, and what kind of impact that's gonna have on, on our roads locally.
Again, I think it's a large facility, has a hundred and fifty employees, I think the new road that you put into
Sewer, Walker, Tenneco.
Would be extremely helpful, a good vision, okay? Had to facilitate that, Highway fifteen set up pretty well. So I think there's a, a really good start, again, but all that will have to be finished.
And we've had, and we have initiated conversations with the county regarding the country road, again, the two ninety-four, about, yeah, going south from, from that corner, about potentially paving that down to Fletcher, and then Fletcher over to Highway fifteen, and that will provide another avenue that would keep the traffic on, on Highway fifteen where the commercial is, where most people are gonna be starting and stopping, you'll be able to essentially go around that as well. But they don't anticipate a lot of truck traffic or, or car traffic, except for the employees.
Employees, right.
They tend to have virtually everything coming in and out rail, correct?
Correct.
So I don't anticipate that being any more of an issue than you'd have at any, at Hughes Brothers or some other place when the whistle blows.
Also, I wanna point out that in the selection of this site for the rail traffic is that there are some limitations we have with the rail. For example, we can put switches on straight sections of tracks. So as we come into town from the southeast, as we come and occur to the side, we need to be going straight before we have a switch, that's why you see the overall site plan the way that it is. Again, we're gonna continue to develop those thoughts and those designs as we move forward. Because we have an opportunity, we can, we can move the building, put the building in different spots, but as I drove around and looked, I was pretty comfortable with the northwest piece of the property as far as an initial look as a place to put it.
Go ahead and, while the council thinks on that, I'll let the public have an opportunity, if anyone in the public wanted to come up and ask any questions or comment, you're welcome to, to come up to the podium if you'd like. One at a time, though. If not, that's fine, if you come up with other questions, you can sure contact us at a later date and we can forward them on the mic or get you in touch with Mike. Like he said, this is still in the, sort of the mental formation stages, and so there's a lot of, of decisions that will be yet to be made, so.
Josh, I wanna stress, it's in the can-do mode, you know, they're really looking to do.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so I wanna make sure that I stress that to everyone, this is, we're trying really hard not to be in front of everyone and say, hey, we have an idea, there's a lot more than an idea here. They're in the process of purchasing equipment right now, they're spending tens of millions of dollars to facilitate that, and this plant is going to land somewhere, and we'd really like it to land in Seward, I believe they would as well, and there are some things to, to figure out, what the heck, there was a rail side, so you brought us here, so let's work, find a way to close that deal, okay?
John, I mean, um
Yeah, Mike, since she's, we're talking about timelines.
Yeah.
And so like, you know, they're moving forward. In your own opinion, if this moves towards the Seward avenue, what is your timeline you feel that you'll be coming back to us?
Well, we, continually, okay? To be honest with you, when I say continually, you know, for the last ten days before Jonathan was on vacation, which he earned, but we're, we wanted him here, we spoke to him every day, because we're talking to the gas company one day, we're talking to the electric provider and finishing that need, and we're just taking the funnel and we're just taking things and pushing it down that tunnel. So the gas company is working while we speak, we're in the process of, we've been out and we did some surveying of elevations and contours on the ground, but we can't get onto the Burlington rail until we have permission from Burlington, we think we'll have a flag person hopefully tomorrow, we think, and so we'll get out and shoot the rail elevations, because when you're on that county road just to the south, there's quite an elevation difference. And as we wrap that site, you know, when you're talking about a twenty-acre building, if you wanna raise that pad six inches, that's, that impacts, there's a lot of impact there. So we're trying to figure out all the grades and lay that stuff out, we're working continually. We'd like to be back to the city soon, we're in the process of developing, like, let's just say, after today.
Give us a gut feeling when you feel like you're, if this is coming to a head when you're coming back.
Okay. I'm gonna start a little different than that. We would like to be able to do dirt work on the site in September, October, and so I'd like us to back off from there, in order to have a, say, an October first, or September fifteenth start date for our earthwork. Where would we need to be? That's only June, July, August, and three and a half months from now, hundred days. So we've got a hundred-day countdown to figure out how we would let this happen. And so I'm gonna ask Josh after today, I mean, we expedited to be here tonight, and talk about how we might put that together. Our first thought would be to, to start working on the rail plan, but in order for us to have a good rail plan, we need a good site plan, so we know what that scope might be. And so we're, so I'm looking at, I, I don't know, we wanted to be here today, we wanted it to be a public meeting, because we wanted to start that ball.
The next question, since this is an ag community.
Mm-hmm.
And that field that you're talking about does have soybeans in the corner, are you going to destroy the crop, or are you gonna give them opportunity to harvest the crop?
I believe we're gonna buy the crop and build the building.
Okay.
Okay? Somehow, some way, in, in the big picture of costs, the crop is very important, but it's, it's not in the overall price of getting the other parts going, in my opinion today. Okay?
And if I was to sum, that would be have to be worked out.
Oh, a lot of great opportunities.
Yeah. Alan, did you have something to add?
Question has been answered.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're glad.
Thanks, Alex. Okay. Item number four, this is considerably special, does it enable permit for RO's line?
I believe he's here. This is the, kind of a duplicate or the same as he's done in the last couple of years, it's for a beer garden during the Fourth of July celebration. It's in the same location as he had before, I'm not aware that there were any concerns or problems when he did it in the last couple of years.
Move for approval.
Second.
With a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Sign off, please register your votes.
Thank you for the much enhancement, single, high speed, consistent, we see it again.
Thank you. Item number five, consideration of awarding bid for the Fourteenth Street Substation Construction Contract to IES Commercial Incorporated in the amount of four hundred seventy-five thousand seventy-six dollars.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the council, Garrett Klein of Olson Associates. This is a project we were here a couple of meetings ago, recommending to advertise for bids, we received four bids for it. Our estimate's high fifty-five, the low was four seventy-five thousand, the others were considerably higher than that, which, the first look is obviously a good thing, because we're below the estimate, but we usually like to run down what may happen that made it so low. So we got ahold of IES's project manager, he had some pretty good reasons of why the number was as low as it was, we raised it to our own estimate, to see if we had a problem getting it there with, with the kinds of things that he mentioned, and we did not. So we're comfortable that he's got everything in this bid, yes, specifically about certain materials, to make sure that we were getting the quality that we specified, and he responded to that, so we're comfortable working on the project that, that, that we specified here. As that said, we're recommending an award of the contract, IES Commercial, for the bid amount four hundred seventy-five thousand oh seventy-six. They intend to start sometime in the middle of the summer and complete the work in early part of November.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Garrett?
Yes. So this is the item that we, in our capital improvement project, was one point nine million.
The capital improvement budget included several components that this is one of, for the transformer, that's sitting there now, is one, there's made a lot of sense for the city to buy that separate than include in a, in a contract for construction because of cost savings and quality control. Power cables, the city's buying that separately, and reclosures, large equipment and items where it can save all of the contract markup, and you have very good control over the quality of what you're getting. But I think the end answer to the question, you add all those things up, and we're still in the neighborhood of about one point three, so we're well below what the, what the estimate was.
Thank you. Any other questions? Other than your motion?
So
The, the, the motion is to award the bid for the Fourteenth Street Substation Construction Contract to IES Commercial Incorporated in the amount of four hundred seventy-five thousand seventy-six dollars?
So
And you have a second for that motion? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Sign off, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, Beck, Cameron, Fritz, Spies, Miller, Schmidt, Hansiski, motion.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, item number six, consideration of a plan for stormwater runoff and sanitary sewer improvements for St. John's New Daycare Center to be located at Hillcrest Drive and Columbia Avenue. And with John Hughes, you wanna get it started, and I think we have some representatives from the project here as well.
Basically, what I'm gonna do is turn it over to the people who actually know about the project, which is pre-engineering, they put together a good plan, and basically it needs to be presented to the council.
Good evening. My name is Jim Berg, I'm an architect with BBH Architects, and I've been asked to be the spokesperson, if you will, for our discussion in terms of the utilities associated with this project. We have two trustees and building committee members here as well, as well as contractor representatives from the contractor and Riga Engineering. If you had a chance to look at the letter that went out in your packet, if you were able to sort out all these utility issues from that letter, then you did pretty well. So what we would like to do is just kinda give you a, a little bit of background as to what's where, what's being relocated, the specific request that the church has in terms of cost sharing, and then certainly we'll take any questions from there. Starting out with this first slide, this is just a rendering of the proposed project that they will go on the site. Why don't you go to the next slide and then we'll, we'll come back. Let me help you get oriented first as to where this project is gonna happen. Hillcrest is on the south side here, Columbia would be on the east side here. The existing church, St. John's Church, is right down in this site right here, Concordia College, of course, out to the east. It's the parcel just directly north across Hillcrest Street, so it's, it's within this parcel right here. So, put back for me, which is that. And so what this will be is Child Development Center, preschool, which is currently located down on the, off the highway there. And obviously, what this will allow the church to do is to provide, significantly expand the opportunity for child development, preschool and, and other ages, expand their enrollment and certainly expand their ministry. And certainly what, beyond that, is to expand the opportunities to serve the community at large. So let's just kinda get a sense for the infrastructure or the sewer line issues that are in play here as far as our conversation tonight. As it sits right now, the sanitary sewer runs across the site right through here, okay? In fact, the existing sanitary sewer actually runs under this residence on this side of the property, just to the west here. The other piece then is the storm sewer that comes in on this property, runs south then along Columbia, and then angles back across the site and then further south. In these, the, the only sewer line or line that actually interferes with the physical construction of the project is the sanitary sewer line. As you can see, existing storm sewer would run outside the building construction, but as you'll see in a later slide, what we're proposing is a parking lot for this project would actually be on this south side, and so not a building improvement over the storm sewer, but a parking lot. So what's being proposed then, next slide please, is relocation. And so let's start with the sanitary sewer line, and this is the only utility that has to be relocated or amended as far as the construction of the project. And so the, the keying that you have here is there's actually five different elements that we're gonna talk about. The only have-to item is this first one, and that's the relocation of the existing sanitary sewer. So instead of running across here, what that would do then is it would be relocated to run in this blue line here, manhole here, running then down here and then tying back, excuse me, mayor, and tying back into the existing line there. The other option, from the standpoint of sanitary sewer, but it has nothing to do at the standpoint of, of having to be relocated or even reconsidered as far as the church's project, is there is also a sewer line that runs down this west side, sanitary sewer, excuse me, that runs along the west edge of the property, and that picks up these properties along this side and ties into here and then runs back here. One of the options that we're suggesting the city might consider, because of the fact that this construction's gonna happen, is that this sewer line could come down to here and instead of running then diagonally underneath the residence here, that line could be extended from this point straight south to tie in here. What that would allow then, the city to do then, is to abandon this line, so you would no longer have that line running under a residence. The other part here, in, in terms of three, is that if, if, if you feel like it's of an advantage to the city, that it's possible then that this section that runs then from here on to the north could also be replaced at this time. And that would be then that an older line then would be updated to a new line as, in conjunction with all the other work that's going on with the project, and would not have to be dug up and replaced with the now new confines of, of this building being in place. Do we know how old that number three section is? Is it gonna be clay or, you know what? John, can you help me point it out? Do we know what the
I don't think it is.
They sculpted.
We sculpted, a couple weeks ago, it is clay. It is clay.
With the exception of, I think the portion of throwing underneath the house is definitely right.
That's right.
I think it's double line. Yeah.
So purely an option, from the standpoint of just taking advantage of the construction pieces that are already happening. The other option then, and again, is certainly as a, is not a have-to, but the city may consider as an option, and the church is willing to extend the easements for, is the upsizing of this existing storm drain, excuse me, I should point to this one, the existing storm drain. That existing storm drain runs along here and then would tie in. There's two options here, one is, well, let me back up, we had our civil engineer, Dan Rosenthal with Riga, is here to answer any of the detailed questions. questions, but they did a study in terms of just the overall drainage area that this line serves or at least attempts to serve. And it's nothing new to you, but that line is undersized to the point of where I think even in a five-year flood event, it's, it can't handle that capacity. So, the thought is, again, as long as we're going to be doing all this other utility work, might it be of an advantage for the city to take that opportunity to upsize that from a 30-inch line to a 48-inch line? Knowing that at some point, that probably will have to be addressed. The advantage being, of course, that if that were upsized at this point in time, that at least this portion of the line down the road would not have to be dug up and replaced. And obviously, the benefit for the church is that the parking lot would not have to be dug up and disturbed at that time. So, there are really two options there. And one is that it be replaced, again, upsize from a 30-inch line to a 48-inch line, but we could abandon the existing lines, undersized line in place. Or if that's not desirable, the other option then is when the new line is being placed, the existing line could be removed at that time. Okay? One other option from the standpoint of storms drainage is, again, within the study that was done of the overall area that collects into the storm drain, I think there was a sense that even though there's an awareness that that line is undersized, it's not something that's going to be addressed immediately. And so, one of the options that the church is suggesting is an opportunity for an additional detention cell. If you go to the next slide. Thank you, Zach. Can I help you get reoriented here? Here's Hillcrest. Here's Columbia. Here's our site that we were just talking about with utilities cutting across it. The church also owns a parcel of property just to the east here. And this is the gas service area right here, if you're at all familiar with that part of town. One of the things that the church is willing to offer is that they would donate to this property to the city with the idea that in the interim, time between upsizing all of the storm drains that would be necessary to handle the water, in the interim, that this lot or this parcel would be donated and potentially used as a detention cell in that area, for that area. We actually have another detention cell, which is actually right down in this area that was done.